This is the call to order for the Special City Council Workshop, January 5th, 2022. It is now 3:40. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to say a word of guidance to us?
I'll pray.
Okay.
All right.
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, here we are, Lord, gathered once again to discuss the future of our Dunellen Police Department. Lord, I pray in Jesus' name that you grants us all knowledge, wisdom, and discernment. Help lead us to the truth. Help lead us to that place of understanding what is the best location for our police department, Lord. And Father, may we never forget what you require of us, and that is to act justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with you. I pray a blessing over this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please be seated. All right, Ms. Odom, roll call, please.
Mayor Weiss.
Present.
Vice Mayor Jim Charon.
I'm here.
Captain Woman Williams.
Here.
Captain Lemon Kenny.
Here.
Captain Woman Kovich. President Dan Smith, Finance Officer.
Here.
Chief McQuaid.
Here.
Troy Slattery, Public Works.
Here.
Georgina Seck, Community Development.
Here.
Michelle Lannan, Assistant Clerk.
Here.
Lieutenant Yawls.
Here.
Attorney Hand.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was put on the city's website, City Hall Board and Board, on December 9th, 2021.
Thank you very much. Before we get started, just a couple things. This is a special workshop called specifically for one item, and that one item is to discuss the police headquarters. What we have done on the agenda is, I think it's very interesting how we've done this, allow the public to speak first. You can give us some of your ideas, some suggestions. This has been on the dinner table for years. A lot of everybody's positions are well-known, but you can get up and tell us what you feel. Then, what you're going to have an opportunity is then to listen to council discuss among ourselves our ideas. And then, before we wrap it up, we'll again come back to those that are with us if you want to make comment, additional comment to us on what we have said or any suggestions. So what this is, is this city council taking this item off of a regular agenda where we usually have 15 to 20 things to discuss, and we're trying to pigeonhole something of this importance in a very short period of time. So this is to give it as much time as it needs. If I feel as Chair that this needs even additional discussion, I will not hesitate to again call another special workshop. We did that when we were tackling the Blue Run Park ordinance, and congratulations to the council. We did something right there that councils in the past have tried to do and couldn't do. And we had a presence of mind that we were going to get that done, and we were going to meet as often as it took to get it done. And that's pretty much what my mindset is on this. So with that said, nothing's off the table. All ideas are open. All suggestions are to be considered. So no matter what your position has been in the past, what you have to say right now will be considered fresh and new, and we'll take it from there. So with that said, Ms. Odom, do we have anybody who has signed up?
Yes, Art Jones.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, Art Jones, 12163 Pimentel Way. Yeah, you know, I've come to many city council meetings, but not all of them. And so I was picking up bits and pieces of what was going on with the police department here. And, you know, I suggested, well, maybe the sheriff would be better. And someone said, oh, they cost too much money. It was $4 million. And then somebody else said, oh, no, it wasn't that much. It was 1.2 million, and da-da-da-da-da. And I'm like, I wonder what the real truth was. And so I did a public records request here to the City of Dunellen, and I got a copy of the letter from the sheriff. And the sheriff said it was 2.053 million to take it over. So, and they don't really need, want to take it over because, from what I understand, talking to other people, they're a bit understaffed and having, you know, to rely on our police force quite often to help them out. And I understand our police force is all deputized. So it looks like, you know, I've changed my position a little bit there. Let's keep our police force. I think the council wanted to keep the police force. So it makes the most sense, because the sheriff's not going to come in and do it. So we don't have that alternative. So where is it best to go? And once again, I've been coming to meetings, and I heard about, oh, the church. No, no, out at the church. And it's over there on Ohio Street. And being relatively new to town, I didn't even know where Ohio Street was. So I get in my truck, and I go over there, and I found it. And it looked all right from the outside. And then I was able to get a tour of the inside of the building, and it's fantastic. It's solid masonry structure. It's very well-built. It looks like it's in a great location for the police station. I think the city got it at a pretty good price. So I'm in favor of that building now. I think it's great. I talked to the police chief. They want it. So I think we should really give, you know, the police here, you know, the best we can do. I think we should give them our full support. And I talked to some other people that said maybe they could get in there in like 90 days. I mean, the building is rock solid. It almost looks like a police station from the outside, you know, it's just a... So, and it's in a great neighborhood. It would help that neighborhood. There's a couple of places that are a little run down. So yeah, it's, let's give the police the very best we can. And I think, rather than try to buy grubs, or, you know, build a modular, you know, all of those are great ideas, but I think the council, you know, did his job in exploring everything. But from my perspective, that building makes sense. Makes a tremendous amount of sense. So as an individual taxpayer here in the city of Dunellen, I fully support that. And whatever the council decides, you know, hopefully it's that.
Thank you very much. Ms. Odom, anyone else signed up?
Yes, we're Kathy Dunn.
Ms. Dunn.
Actually, we wanted to go to the other.
Okay.
Name, name and address.
Kathy Dunn, 11386 Cedric Strawn, Dunellen.
Julianne Mendon, Set 11894, East Blue Cove Drive-In, Dunellen. So I'll start. I missed the memo on the church tours. I thought at the last meeting that we had actually had a vote that said that the church was maybe going to be looking at going to a Realtor, but, so I was interested to hear that there were church tours going on. So, not sure how I missed that. Kathy and I are here to talk a little bit about an idea that maybe was presented before, but we've just done some thinking. So we're not here with the answer, and we're not here to really advocate for one thing, but instead to just offer maybe a little, a little more about an idea that's been looked at in the past. So when City Hall was built more than 20 years ago, Dunellen was still managing several public utilities and generating significant revenue. But times have changed. The city's now millions of dollars in debt with very limited sources of income. All of the utilities are sold. So the city revenues and responsibilities were drastically cut, but the administrative costs needed to run Dunellen City Government were never adjusted. So you would think that when we lost all the utilities, a logical consequence of our new reality would have been to see a shift in things like staffing and space, because we haven't seen our population grow, and we're certainly not seeing a bustling growth in our business community either. So today, we're standing in Dunellen City Hall, the most valuable and desirable property in the city. It's grossly underutilized. It's a huge building, a huge property. It's occupied four days a week, and much of our parking is used by private businesses and for boat trailers. So maintenance on this building, we know, have been long neglected. Thanks to volunteers who came out to work on landscaping, it's gotten a little bit of love that has been very long overdue. So we just posed the question, how can we best use our space and resources? So Kathy's going to talk a little bit about that.
We have been thinking about this, and in order to utilize City Hall more effectively, we would propose an examination into the feasibility of creating a municipal complex at City Hall. The plan to combine city administration and public safety under one roof as a municipal complex will be beneficial in terms of cost-saving and resource utilization. Some benefits of this plan include, number one, enabling the city to sell the current police station property along with the old church, placing both back on the city rolls, tax rolls. Number two, significant reductions in the costs associated with sharing utilities, general maintenance and upkeep, landscaping, pest control, IT expenses, and more. We're going to be all under one roof. It's inconceivable to me as a taxpayer that we've gone out and bought more properties when we have failed to maintain the properties that we own. We don't have money or time to maintain the things that we own. And I mean, I noticed that when I moved here. The fountain's broken. The plants are dead. The parking spaces are filthy dirty. The parking lots filthy dirty. And it's up to citizens to kind of push the button, saying, hey, let's take care of what we have. It's, it's not inconceivable. The police station hasn't been maintained for years, because we don't have time and money, but yet we go out and buy new things. It's like me going and buying a beach house. And because I bought that beach house, I can't afford to put a new roof on my house, because it leaks. And then I come and I say to my sugar daddy, I need a new house. That's the way it is. I mean, we've got to live within our means. Another thing, number four, is we can make application for available grants to harden this facility to provide a central command center for emergencies. And right behind you, there's a huge generator that would power everything. We would have it right here. Another point would be that a public safety presence seven days a week with ease of access for the river patrol and the boat that could be in a, on a dock back here, so that we could oversee the river and the proposed trailer parking area that we want to bring some revenue in to. It would be an opportunity to combine like services like permitting, city planning, and public works at the Public Works Building, so they can work on new things that we're going to do to promote our infrastructure. That's just one idea. Also, we could do some of the upgrades to this building, like the roof. Looks like it's 25 years old. It's probably going to need to be replaced soon. So why not just do that all at the same time? The carpet's moldy. We could take that up and put down the new, like the new floor they put at Ernie Mills Park bathrooms, which are great. We propose that a feasibility study be completed by a contracted professional to determine if initial space would be needed to accommodate/merge aforementioned services into one location, and how much this would cost. We would like to request that the city council consider, consider putting out requests for RFQs, so that we can have a licensed firm qualified to call on when projects are proposed in the future. From the RFQs, we can then select a firm to provide an RFP in order to provide itemized cost for renovation of existing structures. I would recommend that we also place citizens on a, on the feasibility committee to rein in likes or wants versus needs. What do we need and what do we want? Two different things. We've spent excessive amounts of time and money exploring options of ways to provide for our city government, thus neglecting the urgent need to promote and improve Dunellen's residential and business community. So far, we have nothing to show for this expenditure of time and money. Let's take some time and explore all options and get accurate numbers on the cost of any project going forward and the benefit of using the, utilizing the assets we already have. We look forward to continued discussion as we find a way to provide services for our small city in the most cost-effective and efficient way possible for Dunellen taxpayers. Thank you.
And you will have an opportunity to speak again at the end of the discussion, so don't feel like you're rushed. All right. Ms. Odom, anyone else?
Scott Kiefer.
Mr. Kiefer, come on up. Name and address.
Can I hand these out to the council members?
Excuse me?
Can I hand this information down to the council members? My name's Scott Kiefer. I reside at 9075 North Cedar Cove Road in Dunellen. I'm a business owner here in town along with a property owner. I'm an investor and outsider, as many of us were referred to. I've been in real estate since 1999. I became a broker in 2005. I've made my career out of dealing in government red tape. I sell Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, HUD, VA, USDA. If it's got a government acronym, I deal with it. I'm also a Florida certified instructor for real estate, and I'm also a member of the Historic Preservation Committee here for the city of Dunellen. I've done a lot of research on the properties around Dunellen, which is what I've handed out to you guys today, is properties that are sold, that are for sale, and just to kind of give you a general idea of what's happened around town. I still think Soul Harbor is probably the best option, but I went through the process of going through everything. One of the main things that I looked at is whether we're selling Soul Harbor or selling the current police department and basically any future city business. Soul Harbor's in the center of downtown. It's right in the center of the historic district. It is a fortified concrete building. There's roughly 65 parking spaces there. I don't believe they all need to be paved. Probably paved a couple of handicap ones. I believe, because as a business owner, that's what the city made me do, or the county made me do in both Citrus County and Marion. I had to pave a number of handicap spots. The rest could be impermeable space. So I don't think we have that big expense if we're just using it for public parking. I've looked around for suitable locations for the police department. I came up with another option other than Soul Harbor. I believe the current police department has passed its useful life. Every building hits a useful life. It's, it's either got to be completely redone or torn down. What's the expense worth? So we've already purchased the Soul Harbor building. We already own it. It saves us a lot of money there. We've got $365,000, as I understand, in the budget for the police department to rehab the current one. So I'm guessing that that could be moved over to fixing the Soul Harbor building up into the new police station. The other choice that I came up with is Gary's Carpet, right next door to the police station, is for sale, kind of. It's had a for sale sign on it forever. There's no phone number on it, really no one to get a hold of, except for when they have the yard sale on Saturday. And then the lady, don't want to use any names, that owns it, I've left her three messages and haven't heard back from her. I would say we'd make an offer on that, tear that down, build a new police station, and then tear down the current police station, and it adds parking over there. It's another option. It still comes in cheaper than the gruff option. So that's about all I have on this, but I did want to give city council a little further information, because I know we have an appointment later to do with a real estate broker. And just for all future city business, you can use a Realtor. They charge a minimum of about 6% commission. Sometimes you get a little more, sometimes a little bit less. There's another option out there. It's called a limited listing agreement. Not all brokers do it. Some do. Can I have another minute?
30 seconds.
30 seconds. So basically, you would list the property for a flat fee of 300, 400, $500, whatever they charge. You're in control of it. You handle everything. You can put all your disclosures in there out front, and you're going to pay a commission to the Realtor that sells it. So typically 2% to 3% versus 5% to 7%. You handle everything. You put your disclosures out. You say in the beginning, highest investment due in 30 days. You review the offers. The good thing is, you're an MLS. You're advertised to 25,000 Realtors across the state versus the city's website, and you don't have to pay those large fees. It's listed with a real estate agent, but it's not technically. You're going to handle it all. You're going to handle the showings. You're going to handle the contracts. So it is an option. If council wants more information, I can give that to them later.
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer. Thank you. Please stick around and maybe you want to follow up to that later. Anyone else signed up?
I don't have anyone signed up, but let me just check Zoom. And then I did receive one public comment via email that I was asked to read in the record from someone who could not be here.
Well, let's see if anyone else in the audience would like to speak first before we read. Yes, Tom?
Tom Welch, P.O. Box 143, Dunellen, Florida. First, I'd just like to thank council for the amount of time you have taken to discuss this topic thoroughly. I don't think anybody can accuse you guys of trying to rush this through, number one. And number two, the council certainly has given the public numerous opportunities to speak into this, to share their opinion. So I just want to say thank you. I really appreciate that. I think the transparency of the city council is really important, and you guys are demonstrating that. I also like to thank the two gentlemen that came up prior to me for the due diligence that they have done to just add some additional information, which, which I didn't know, but I think is very, very helpful. And I certainly appreciate that. Like Mr. Jones, I've been to a lot of the meetings where the police department's been discussed. I haven't been to all of them either, so I can't say that. Ultimately, to me, it seems like this council's goal is to, number one, find a new place for our police department, because the current one, and I believe it's unanimous across the council here, the current one, is not doing what the police department needed to do, quite frankly. So I think what it comes down to, council wants to do, is make sure that they're good stewards of the money they have to invest in a future police department. And with all the ideals that have been presented, I haven't done all the math, but just off the cuff, it certainly looks like the, the location on Ohio Street is going to be the least expensive, the most effective, and the fact that the building is in great shape, and as the term has been used already, it's fortified. I think that lends a lot to the building. Now, I know it's on the workshop agenda that there's going to be some discussion with that. I don't know all the details with that as far as the Realtor, so on and so forth, but if it comes down to dollars and cents, I think it makes most sense, not hearing what you guys are going to be saying, you know, in a little bit here. I think it makes the most sense to use that building. You know, ultimately, we can make decisions, the best decisions we can, based on what we know. However, as time goes on and more information is presented, you know, it's not uncommon or unusual to make a different decision based on the new information that we have. And I think that's where logic dictates itself. So I just want to say thank you. Looking forward to what you have to say. And I always try to keep an open mind to everybody's perspective, because there's always an opportunity to learn something new. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in, in the room that would like to speak? Okay. Anybody, Ms. Odom on Zoom or anywhere else?
No, sir. I do not have anyone on Zoom.
Okay. You do have a comment that was sent in to be read into the record?
Yes, sir.
Please state who the individual is and the information we need.
This was an email sent to the entire council and myself dated January 3rd, 2022, from Reverend Jeffrey W. Welch and the session of the Dunellen Presbyterian Church on behalf of the congregation. The subject, relocation of the city police department. The congregation of Dunellen Presbyterian Church, through its leadership, wishes to convey its strong support of locating the city's police department at the corner of Chestnut and Ohio Street, commonly referred to as the former church property, that has housed the congregations of the FUMC and Souls Harbor congregations. We support the choice for the following reasons. Location on the, location on the already city-owned property makes sense fiscally, tactically, for the police department. Visibility in the community and demonstrates to the community that the historic core of the city remains an important and life-sustaining part of community for small business development, residential walking, distance living, and historic preservation. Having followed the discussion on the potential use of the property for a police headquarters through the media and other sources, city council members and persons speaking in public hearings have repeatedly falsely advised that neighbors object to locating the police department on the property at Chestnut and Ohio. There could be nothing further from the truth expressed in such comments. Not only do we, as a congregation, who share a greater boundary with the property than any other residence or business, support the location, a survey of our immediate neighborhood, Chestnut, Ohio, and Park Street, found that not a single property owner objected to the placement of the police department at the former church property. Comments on that the neighborhood objects to the placement of the police department on Ohio Street are spurious at best and nefarious at worst. We would not be good Presbyterians if we did not admit that in at least some of our support of the uses of property on Ohio Street is an expression of our own self-interest. Our congregation has a long history of supporting a strong downtown historic district that is a mix of business, residents, and public buildings. Twice in the last 30 years, we have literally put our money where our mouth is regarding the downtown historic area. In 1993, this congregation had the opportunity and the resources to move out of downtown Dunellen, beyond the city limits, toward a more advantageous and viable location north of the city. The congregation decided not to make that move, because we believed in downtown and its value to the greater community. We spent over $750,000 to expand our current location and stay put. A second time about eight years ago, this congregation once again was faced with a choice of leaving our current location or making extensive repairs to our historic sanctuary. Again, we chose to invest in the community, spending nearly $500,000 to stay put, when building a new facility may have been a more advantageous investment. Why did we stay again and invest in the community? Because we believed in the city and we, and the value of it downtown. We still do. And believe that the police department being located on the former church property reflects comparable and compatible values with our, with our own. Unfortunately, previous congregational activities are planned that conflict with the time of the council workshop dedicated to the discussion of the location of the police department facility. We will not be able to send a representative to express our position. We would humbly request that this letter be read aloud at the workshop, or at a minimum, that this text of this communication be read into, spread upon the minutes of the meeting. Sincerely yours, seeking the welfare of our city, the leadership of the Dunellen Presbyterian Church, Jeffrey W. Welch, pastor and moderator of the session.
Very good.
Mr. Man.
I want to make a comment on that first, then be ready. Anyone else, Ms. Odom?
No, sir.
The only thing I want to comment on that is, I did receive that email along with the entire council, and I did respond to it. I thanked the pastor for his input, but I took objection to this council being labeled spurious and nefarious. Spurious means untruthful. Nefarious means at the purpose to do evil. So I took exception to this council being, those words being used toward us. I thought some of his suggestions and ideas were very solid and well-thought-out, but this council is, is just the opposite of those terms on all matters. I've never seen a council that just tells it the way we feel it. It may be right, we may be wrong, but I have never felt anyone is purposely, on this council on this subject, purposely being untruthful and dastardly or evil, whatever nefarious means. So I did write him back and let him know I didn't appreciate this council being used, termed in that way. Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that even though I am an elder at the Dunellen Presbyterian Church, I am not a member of the sitting session. So I was just making sure that was put on the notes, that information. I think he was only referring to the comments that the neighborhood... to the comments that the neighborhood did not want the church is what the words were you were referring to, so.
Ms. Odom, anything else before we...
I just want to remind those who are attending via Zoom that you must raise your hand if you want to be recognized to speak during public comments.
Okay, we're going to turn this over to council. I'm just going to give a quick overview where we were and for the record and where we are. There is no question, you go back 10 years or more, even beyond that, this subject has come on, off, and on about the need for a new police headquarters. It's nothing new. It's a very difficult problem and one that previous councils could not figure out what to do, and it just kind of, I think with the economic situations the city got itself into, it kind of buried itself. Now that the city is digging itself out of the hole, that need, which has been there for years, is still there, and it is now for discussion. So regardless of who should have done it, or who could have done it, or wish someone would have addressed it, it wasn't, and it's sitting on this council's lap. If you ask me what council is dealing with, it's a choice of what's the best choices. But what makes it a Rubik's Cube is where and how do we come up with the money, and where's the money going to come from, and how much it's going to cost? And when we triage the needs of the city, how much are we going to earmark toward this at possibly the expense of other things that need to be done? So it's, there's dynamics going here. What's the best choice? And no matter what choice you choose, how are we going to finance? And how are we going to finance it, to me, is the biggest problem for me. If I had my way, I would love, if we had the money, I would love to buy a clear lot, design a nice new police station, build a new one right there, and we're good to go. Unfortunately, financially, that might not be possible. So anyway, where we're at is this council is going to tackle this thing one way or another. I think it's time. I think this council is motivated. I know I am. I'm pretty tired of talking about it. I'm sure everybody else is. And let's go. So I'm just going to turn this over. We can take turns speaking. Just, you know, let's not get into a 15- or 20-minute oratory. Let's just say what we want to say and give our reasons for it. And we'll just bounce this thing back and forth and see what we come up with. Anybody want to speak first? Ms. Kenny, you're looking at me.
Oh, no, that's not because I want to speak first. But I will speak first.
Okay, go ahead, please.
I appreciate the comments made both by the pastor and by the mayor. I definitely feel that when three of us were in the last campaign, we had a lot of conversations with people generally speaking. And the informations that we get today are a little bit different after we consolidate, certain groups consolidate their interests. But it still has been very, very difficult because we've always wanted to do what we thought was right for the police and for the city. Unfortunately, for me, as a Realtor also at one time, and also for me as having been on the planning commission, the comprehensive plan has loomed very important in my mind in how we should address the future. I think everything that we do here, as a matter of fact, requires that we look forward as to what we are going to need and not be a penny wise and a pound foolish if we know there will be issues that we will be able to help today that will be helpful to us tomorrow. I say that because, just as at the beginning, when on the planning commission, the idea of putting a non-conforming use in a residential district would have impact on people who trusted their residential district and their ability to get the most in terms of their investment. Not only that, in a residential district, you have all sorts of young people. You have renters, you have a multiplicity of individuals who, in our historic district, may also be shoppers, various ages. But we also have roads that indicate 15 miles an hour. The latest thing that has been a concern to me is not only my feeling that people who have invested in residential districts should have their properties protected, but also we have had a new problem loom forward to this particular council. And that is the perspective that we may be getting a northern Florida turnpike extension. And as we have seen the public coming in with the no build, and as we have seen demonstrations as to what the traffic is going to be like, to have our police station in a residential area where they don't have immediate access to a commercial corridor does not seem like necessarily in the people's interest. It is complex. And I, for one, would not be in favor of the Souls Harbor Church because I've also heard of different opinions as to the actual health of the building. So it just depends, I guess, on trying to get closest to the truth and closest to the need. I would not be in favor of the Souls Harbor Church, and I made that commitment to the people who supported me when I ran for office. And I think a non-conforming use in any district tends to increase the blight. And I especially was interested in the comments made by the second gentleman who has a real estate background also. And some of the suggestions that he had, I thought were very feasible and were things that maybe I would like to hear more from him and hear some of the ideas he has in terms of what limitations we could have to go forward. But regardless of how I vote, or regardless of what we do, I will be working in my mind and in my heart towards what I think is best for the people of Denellum. I think what is best for the people of Denellum will also be best for the police. And I think the need for the police will probably become something that will be, in the future, hopefully we are growing, and hopefully if we have more problems, we're going to need them to be certainly taken care of and certainly know that the people are behind them. I think that's enough. If I could come back and respond to other people later.
Sure, you're going to have a second chance.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Williams really does not have anything different to say than what I've already said. You know, I really, really feel, I understand everybody's comments. I like to imagine myself in other people's position, and I think I've said that before. I have worked for the state of Florida for 38 and a half years, and most of those years I've worked. We've moved, we moved a couple of times because the building, the building was not professional. And the state of Florida, they cared for the staff and had no problem putting us in a professional setting. We, I think law enforcement is one of the most important positions, industries, in whatever you want to call it. They put their lives on the line for us. And here, almost a year and a half, we're still talking about the police department and where they should go. They need to move. And I am still in favor of the Souls Harbor Church. What is the purpose of money? It's to spend. I've probably been a taxpayer longer than some of the people here in Denellum. I've worked for 38 and a half years, so I'm pretty sure I've paid a lot of taxes. And my concern is for the health and the welfare of people. That should be everybody's concern. That's very important. But sometimes I listen, and I think there are other things that come before the people, our law enforcement. These people go home, may have to be called to come back out, you know? They may not even be able to go back home to their families. They're putting their lives on the line for us. And then here we are, a year and a half, still talking about our police department. They're in an unprofessional building, unsafe building. And that's all I have to say.
Ms. Kovach?
Yeah, I don't know if how much you'll pay attention to meteorology and current news, whatever. Two weeks ago, there was this really weird storm in Texas. It rained fish. I mean, I don't know if it had any, did you all catch that on the news?
Got it.
Yeah, it was raining fish. Well, the point I'm trying to make is, as much as we pray that it would rain money on Denellum, it ain't going to happen. Okay, so here's how I feel. There's no doubt about it. We need a new police building, okay? And the fact that we have looked at all these options and still haven't come to any consensus just tells us, that's probably a really good thing, because there's this thing called fiscal responsibility. We can make decisions today that people are going to look at 10, 15, 20, 50 years ago and say, what on earth happened?
It's still to be examined.
Things do not stay the same. It's the way it is. So here's what we have to work with. We are looking to have a contract with a broker, Van Aken, from Fox Fire, and hopefully get, I'm just guessing, $350,000 for the Souls Harbor Church. If we sell the police department property, $250,000. We have budgeted $365,000 in the police budget for 2022 for construction costs. That total comes up to $965,000. That is a sizable sum of money. What is the best option to do with it, where we don't have to go to the bank, and we don't have to risk pulling money out of our combination of funds that support the city? And again, you could, again, once again, we need to account. As I said when we were running, we need to squeeze every dollar until it screams, okay? And we're going to pass on these decisions to other councils for a long, long time. And what was presented today by Kathy Dunn and Julian Bandanka rang a bell with me, and I didn't hear it the first time today, okay? And going back to Metcalfe's Plan, my nemesis, okay, 10 Metcalfe, what did he mention at one time? He said, put a second story on this building, okay? It is feasible. Put a second story on this building and expand it in two directions. That direction and parking out in this direction and still have room for a very viable police operation because, as was mentioned in the presentation by Ms. Dunn and Ms. Bandanka, it is possible, and it's already been discussed actually not too long ago, to move our planning department over to the Public Works Building. Okay, I took a tour, I've been in the Souls Harbor Church three times. I've seen what's there, and I just cannot conceive of it being converted into a police station. However, there are already offices not in use at the Public Works Building. And in conference with Troy, I asked him, how much money would it take to really set up a kind of civics building where people come in, and it looks just like this? And Troy came up with a figure, and I think it was about $200,000. Again, the office space is there, it's unutilized. Seriously. There's already an AC unit, the pump unit takes care of it. And guess what the city spent just recently? Troy was the figure on the parking lot. The parking spaces...
The Ray Mills portion was a little over $300,000.
Yeah, $300,000. And we have parking spaces below or over there. So once again, to repeat, if we took our planning department offices, moved them over there, it would be a workable situation for the people that come in here and pull permits, and it would be open, accessible, and look just like a public works building should be. And many councils do that. They combine their public works department because the person in charge of dealing with those contractors is Troy Slattery, and he sits right there in his office, okay? So what would that do? That would free up at least that corner of the building, okay? And there's a conference room over there that is hardly ever used. Seriously, it is open space. Okay, so once again, there could be an addition put into the back. Yeah, structurally, it can be done. Look into that. Parking spaces can be put on this side of the building, and a second story can be put up here. Okay, so there's another idea, and guess what? We can do it for less than $900,000. And it'll be band spanking new, and entitled some new roof, which this building already needs. It's a little out of the box, but we've been thinking. But it's not unusual to have a two-story police station. I have a friend, actually a family member, who's former chief of police in Carver in North Carolina, population 20,000. They have several, he's got a couple substations. Joel was responsible for establishing them, and they, because property is so expensive in Carver, they built up, okay? So they had the public working place area where they dealt with the public on the first floor, and everything else was upstairs, the evidence room, secured rooms, interview rooms, whatever, whatever they needed, rooms for storage of their equipment. Okay, so I think what was presented today is undoable, and guess what? We will not have to go to the bank to do it. And we might even have a couple hundred thousand dollars surplus to buy new police cars or whatever. So I'd like to stop right there.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Kovach. Vice Mayor?
First of all, again, this is not, this is my idea, this is your idea, this is nobody's idea. I am open to all ideas. Someone, you know, sent an email out, and I said, we're educated by staff, we're educated by the citizens, and we're educated by our experiences in life. And, you know, some of the ideas are very good. Some of them I don't know if I could put my head around and fully go for, just because I, you know, I mean, an elevator, which we would have to have in this building, would be, and I just know in a residential, and I know this for 100% fact, is $40,000 just for an elevator. And that's residential. I can't imagine what a commercial elevator is going to be, probably double, if not up to $100,000. But that's an estimate, and that's just a guess. But I know for a fact, $40,000 for a residential, single-person elevator. You know, as far as, if you go around and you actually speak to people, yes, they are fine with the building in Ohio Street. I've talked to other people, and some of the ideas about, such as Russ, they think it's a great idea, but they're like, Valerie, you're taking it off the tax records. Where are those funds coming back from? Where are those funds coming back from? You know, you can't make up fifteen thousand dollars, as we've all said. Money doesn't fall out of the sky like fish do in Texas. So, you know, I would have to, even though I love that location, because like you've said many times, Councilwoman Kenny, having your place out there in front is a great idea. And it is, you know, if we had it, that'd be great. But I can't see taking it off of our tax records. And as far as Gary's carpet, I understand where we could get a few more parking spaces out of there where our building is now. But again, I would rather see a developer come in there, tear down the place in that building, and again, put that money back into our coffers? Coffers? As a, say that a few times fast, for our tax base. Let's get the tax base built up where we can. The property on Ohio and Pennsylvania Avenue, oh, Power Road, excuse me, they have listed that with Coldwell Banker. It's eighty-five thousand for just the one lot, not even two lots. So I just, and again, I was not the biggest proponent of the portable modular, thank you, not portable, sorry, modular buildings. Not that they're as bad as what, not as bad, but not as sturdy as I thought. But, you know, I still have an issue with that. As a professional opinion, not as a personal opinion. And then the idea of trying to merge our two buildings in here together. Again, if we do construction over here, you know, my thing is, where are we going? What are we doing? And we're gonna have a double expense of moving everybody, then moving them back. And so I don't believe the financial, like you said, being physically responsible is that option. And again, I'm just, you know, I haven't had time to digest it all, but just doing the numbers in my brain, I can't get to that point. But I, it's a good, I mean, I understand, but it's just I don't think it's the feasible thing to do. I know I've been a, because we did do our due diligence back in the day, we did have planning and zoning, put the building over there on the Ohio Street, that it could go that way. Because that is a, and like you said, it's residential, but it's residential business office. So that neighborhood, the historic district, is already with businesses in there. It's not strictly residential any longer. And it hasn't been that way since nineteen, maybe eighties, early nineties, if I'm not mistaken. I know I was in city council the first time, and I was probably thirty years younger than I am now. So, so, you know, again, I look at the building. We've had an engineer walk through that building. We've had a contractor who was never gonna bid on it, had no skin in the game, come and give us their professional estimate on that building. And their prices were high, but it was higher than, because they're from out of the area, and we knew some savings already were. The three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars that we have right now in-house to do something will definitely get us to the point where our police can be in there, probably like someone said, within ninety days. And I know that Chief, you are always open to give tours of that building per request. So if anybody does have to get in there and wanna look at it, I'm sure Chief is happy to set up an appointment and get people in there to look at it anytime. That's within their range. So I really and truly believe, if we're going to do this financially, we have three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that we have already purchased that property with. We're not having to spend it, we're not hoping that somebody buys something. It's a done deal. We have three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in the checking account today. For, okay, just making sure, that we can, ten thousand dollars if we can get the engineer in there. We have three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars after that to get renovations going. If I am a citizen, which I am, of the city of Dunellen, and I want this council, even though somebody might have said, hey, we're not gonna do that, vote for me, and I understand that, and I appreciate that. And I've been on that side of the coin where you said, oh, that's never gonna happen. And then when you sit down in this seat, things change, like Pastor Welch said, things change. Things that we thought could happen can't happen. And it's not that you're going back on your word, it's that we're being responsible and we're looking at everything that is now in front of us, not that was in front of us a year and a half ago. And so those are just some, so I don't think anybody who voted for any of y'all that made that pledge, I don't believe they could come back to you and say, oh my gosh, you did such an evil thing. Because I think you did the right thing in this council by looking at everything we have looked at and getting our facts and being physically responsible with our funds. And that is what I, as a citizen, want my representative to do for me. And I am proud to sit up here with each and every one of you, even when we have our days of differences. I listen to you respectfully, and I really do, I mean, I would be happy to change my mind. I honestly would, if I thought it was a better decision. So I think all of your ideas have merit, but I still think this one is a good option for the city, is the right option. And fifty years from now, when I have grandkids running, I guess great-grandkids running around here, I won't be embarrassed to have sat up here in this council with each and every one of you and make the right decisions. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna say a few things. Keep going back to the history, because the history of, you have to understand, if you wanna understand the present, you have to understand the past. That pretty much applies with everything. This would not have been such a convoluted mess until the numbers start getting skewed and start getting thrown around, where the council doesn't, is being asked to make a decision without having control of the numbers. We are all very aware of some of the recent financial snafus that the city has made in the past. That wasn't that long ago. We're just recovering from that. Now we have a very big financial commitment in front of us right now. And these numbers, based on the day or the week, are changing. Council can't make a decision like that. So the way this thing got to where it is, is that piece of property came up for sale and it could be purchased for three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. To me, I thought that was a steal. A six thousand square foot building on six building lots. My goodness, home run. Then the first number that came for the retrofitting, and this is all documented. This isn't me guessing or, you know, it's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So after the concept was to purchase, there was a consensus, unanimous consensus, to purchase the building for three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then shortly thereafter, it was told the council that it was estimated it would cost three hundred and fifty thousand to retrofit it. Council unanimously, including myself, voted to go forward. So I thought for three twenty-five plus a three fifty retrofit, for that kind of money, you can't go wrong. So between the time of that, and then it became time to commit to a contract, the number that was presented to us was no longer three fifty for a retrofit. It had bumped up to eight fifty. Five hundred thousand dollar difference between the first vote and the second. At that point, when the vote was asked, I said, no, this isn't what I agreed to. So the council at time took a vote on it and went forward with it four to one with me in dissenting. This is the beginning of what happened. Now, in the meantime, the numbers have bounced around wildly since then. We've heard figures of a million two for a retrofit. There was an application for a grant of well over a million dollars. So there was a situation where council really didn't know what we were agreeing to. And I respect, I have, I offer no apology to anybody for not doing anything. Because I don't think council's ever been in a position to really make a decision based on sound numbers. Now, if you say to me, if you could just do it the way you wanna do it, what would you do? What I would do is if the current building could be retrofitted itself, and there's assumption that it can't be, and I don't know if that's true or not, but there's an assumption it can't. We have three hundred and sixty-five thousand already budgeted for a retrofit. So if you ask me what in the perfect world I would like, if that building that we're currently in could be retrofitted itself for three hundred and sixty-five thousand, along with paving the eighteen parking spots that are there, you would now be totally done with any further financial commitment in the future. Because it would be the three sixty-five right now. Now you're in the enviable position that you already own the Soul Harbor Church. So for three hundred and sixty-five thousand that we already have, if it's doable, if it's not doable, it's not doable. If it is doable, you redo, you get that looking brand spanking new with new paving, you polish it up. The Empire State Building was built in nineteen thirty-nine. So anybody assuming that age automatically disqualifies a building for repair. Go to Savannah, Georgia, and you'll see houses that were built two hundred years ago that are mansions. So age doesn't automatically be a disqualifier. Disqualifier would be if someone could show this council that repairing that current building makes no sense, like putting two thousand dollars into a car that's worth five hundred dollars. So the beautiful thing of that, with the money we currently have, if you put that three hundred and sixty-five thousand into the current building, the expenses for the most part are done. And now, if you wanted to keep that church for another option, community center, recreation center, whatever, it's already paid for. Just this week, Mr. Burns had his birthday party. There was no place in the city for him to have his birthday party. He had to go all the way to Citrus Springs. A couple times recently, the Chamber of Commerce have had their awards. There's nowhere in the city to have their awards. They've gone, went to Citrus Springs, and one time they went to the Wedding Bar. So I don't know what the need would be, but that would be it. Now, my second choice would be, because we have command of the numbers, would have been to purchase a vacant lot. We know before it was listed with a realtor, those lots on Powell Street were seventy thousand apiece. They're up now because there's a realtor involved. But they were, when we first talked about it, they were seventy thousand apiece. The prices that we received on building a new, brand-new building, based on the chief's design, something that he designed, a over four thousand square foot building, that he said, this is the way I wanted. A brick-and-mortar builder said he could do it for somewhere around six hundred and seventy-five thousand. And a modular builder said he could do it for seven fifty. So if you add those two figures together, you could have a brand-new building plus the price of the lot, whether it's six seventy-five or seven fifty. Now there'd be other expenses naturally with the parking and whatever. But that would be a perfect way to go. Now you go to the third choice in this, and it could move up in my selection. If that Soul Harbor Church could be retrofitted for what it was originally quoted at. We got three twenty-five, we've got three sixty-five earmarked for the retrofit. If that three sixty-five is the number, that was the original number, if that's what it could do, then suddenly that comes in play. But getting into something that's going to cost a million dollars or more, the city doesn't have, it does have the funds to do that. It would be incorrect to say we don't have the funds. We can go to reserves, we can move money around. But there's gonna be some departments that desperately need this money that don't have it, particularly roads. If we put a million dollars into the police department, the way we're currently talking about it, the department that will get smacked in the jaw as much as anything would be the roads. Now, if you wanna juggle the money around and say we could do the reserves and we can pay it back and whatever, and say, no, the roads aren't being impacted. My point is that tax money can be used one of two ways, for roads or the police. So Mandy, if you can show this, I've put some time into this because I really wanna get on top of this. Just the number part that Jan corrected my numbers. I sent you a revision with Jan's edits, she found all my mathematical mistakes. I would rather not show the public how bad I am in public.
Do you want this one?
No, I want the one that I sent back.
She sent it back, what time? I mean, she might be able to find it that way, is what I'm saying. That's how I have to, when things are set by what time.
So this, this is.
You want the one that you originally sent?
No, the one that I sent back and said, I corrected it. This is the one I sent Michelle and said, please print, please pull this up.
The email that you forwarded to me and said, please have this available for viewing at the special workshop.
Okay, we'll put that up and I'll try to wade through it.
That is the one that.
Okay, okay. Okay, blow it up the best you can. Yes, thank you. Okay. If you look at this, and one thing I wanna say, on top of this, I have contacted the mayor of Crystal River and talked with him at length yesterday. And also, I've talked with the city administrator or the city manager of Inverness. And as you know, they have, their policing is done by the Citrus County Sheriff. So I really wanted to, can you blow that up just a little bit more, Mandy? No?
It's in an email, I have to convert it.
Okay. Do the best we can.
Play your music.
Okay. If you look at the top one, it's tough, it's little. The current budget expense for the police this year is eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That is our operating cost. What's good about this, talking to the the mayor of Crystal River and Inverness, with their deal with the county, their numbers are actually above this. So somehow, some way, our policing is being done, our in-house policing is being done at a rate that's better than what they're doing hiring the Citrus County. And I've gone over this with Chief. So if you look at that top line, this year, we have eight hundred and ninety thousand. Hey, excellent, Mandy, thank you so much. So you have eight hundred and ninety thousand, look at the first line underneath the red line. That's the operating costs, plus three hundred and sixty-five retrofit. So that means this year, we have a million. So that means this year, we have a million 255,000. Then you go to the next year, go to the second black line, you have to estimate about a 3% increase in cost. So our operating expense for next year would be predicted at 917,000, plus another 365,000 for the retrofit. Then when you go three years out, at a 3% in 2014, the operating cost goes up to 944,000, plus the $365,000 retrofit. So the, when you include the retrofit, the police budget for this year is 1,255,000, then 1,282,000, 1,309,000. The sum of the three years would be 200,000, 2,750,000 for the operating cost, plus another 1,095,000 for the retrofit. So it would actually, to run the police, to run the, this is numbers we need to know, to run the police along with this project, we would be up to 380,460. All right? So then you go to the second paragraph here underneath this lines. We have budgeted 365,000 for the retrofitting of the building. It has been discussed, the 365,000 could be budgeted to the subsequent two years. And Jan put in, and Jan, maybe you can explain this. If funding is available, the five-year capital plan plus indicates future funding needs to be determined through reserves, grants, or loans. So we have the 365 this year, but the 365 the following two years would come from...
Is not necessarily guaranteed, because the one-cent sales tax estimates at 250,000 a year. So that leaves 115,000. Where do we get it from? That's up for discussion. And that's what's in the five-year plan. It was pushed out three years, based on the original presentation that was made to council, that this whole project would be in multiple years. So it was just evenly broken out, 365, 365, and 365. But in any given year, there would need to be discussion on where does it come from?
All right.
Can we take it just from general revenues? Possibly, depending on what the estimates are for the next year or two. Or do we have to dip into reserves? But at a minimum, if you were going to use the one-cent sales tax, there would be approximately 250,000 of it.
Okay. So that's a good point. So that 365 for three years is the number that council was given, and that's the number that we currently are working with. So right now, what's in front of us as far as the Soul Harbor Church is the purchase price for 335,000, plus over a three-year period, 365,000 a year to retrofit. So you can see right there that we have the money this year, but in the next two years, there would even be a shortfall on the 365, and that money would have to come from somewhere else. This is where the rub comes in. This is where the rub comes in, you know? Okay, we don't have this money for sure, and what are we getting into here? If you go, I know you guys can't see my marker. It says it has been discussed, the 365 could be budgeted in the subsequently two years. If, okay. If approved, this would bring the total budget money to a retrofit spread over three years of 195,000. When the retrofit money, which is 1,095,000, to the three-year anticipated operating budget of 275,000, the total becomes 3,846,000. So that's the difficulty right here. The difficulty right here is what would it cost to do anything? If it's more than 300, we have, we have 365,000, plus we have what we purchased that building for. We have that. There's no problem. When we go into year two or three is where the issues, where the issues come in. If, if the Soul Harbor Church can be retrofitted for 365,000, we got a done deal. We already have the money. But if, if as projected, as council was told previously, that it would take another 365,000, two more years, then we're running into deficits, we're running into possibly going into reserves, we're possibly going into hoping we get grants, we're possibly getting into not being able to do the road repairs we want to, we want to do. So if you understand these things, you can understand dilemma. If the money was there, this is, this is pretty easy call what we would, we can do. So the key, the key to this is to finally get the numbers, what it costs. Two things I would ask is, is it really true? Is it really true that the current building cannot be repaired? Is that really true? With 365,000, make that a 3,200 square foot building with a fresh paving on it and make it something nice. If it is, if it can't happen, we've got to go to plan number two. Plan number two could be the retrofit of the church. But what is the real expense? Can we really get into it for a million dollars as council has been told? Right now, if I'm told we got to come up with a million dollars to retrofit the church, my vote remains no. If I'm told we can retrofit that church for 365,000, as it originally was given to council, I would vote yes. Third thing is the buying of a lot and building. What I like about that is you have control. You know what the numbers are, you have guarantees, you have project managers, you have the architects, it's all done. It's not falling on us to supervise it step by step by step. But where I'm at is, no matter what we decide to do, if we're asked to come up with an additional million dollars that we don't really have to spend, or could spend in different ways, I'm not going to support, I can't support any of it. I can't support any of these. So if we could, if we could retrofit this Soul Harbor Church for 365,000, great. If we can retrofit the current building, great. If we bought a lot for 75,000 and we could put a new building on it for 700, well, we've got 365,000, we still could sell the church, hopefully get our money back. We're almost, we're almost home. So with the three options there, we can go through it. There's been discussion of putting the police station at Public Works. There's been discussion of putting the police station at the Lions Club. There's been discussion of putting the police station at City Hall, discussion of Soul Harbor Church, Soul Harbor gruffs, and vacant lots, and the Masonic Building. I've even heard the vacant feet store would be a great place for, for. So no one can say we haven't looked at every possibility. So it really, really, to me, comes down to what we can afford. Ms. Kenny?
Well, I certainly concur that we need hard numbers, and it has been very difficult to get the hard numbers. And as far as I am concerned, as a representative of the people, I think that we need to maybe give more information out to our citizens, so that we can be more responsive to what they are telling us that they need and what they expect. But in the end, I would like to see that whatever decision that is made will be a decision that will be viable in the future, because our future is going to change, and we can anticipate greater needs in terms of increased population, and in terms of increased traffic, and in terms of safety.
Ms. Williams, you want to repeat yourself?
One day at a time. I'm putting off for tomorrow what we can do today.
Ms. Covin?
Well, going back again to how the people of the now and early field, we had a survey, we had an election, roads are the number one priority. And they continue to degrade. And as Troy Slattery, our Public Works manager, has brought up again and again, the longer we wait to answer and get the grants and so on, fix our roadways, the more the expense goes up, literally not by year, but by month. Literally, our roads are breaking apart next season. There's a huge factor in that, and so on. So we cannot go beyond what the city can afford. If you are going to put police station versus roads again, the public has spoken. However, we do need a new police operation, but we need to get the real answers, and again, to repeat this, they're right in saying. This whole idea of people walking in intern, or engineers, and construction companies, everybody that walks in comes up with a different number for the retrofit for the Soul Harbor Church. In fact, that most likely reality is, we're looking at 365,000 times three years in a row is a number the city cannot afford. If you look at those other options that are within our city's finances...
Okay, thank you.
...they stay the same here.
All right, Vice Mayor?
I agree. You know, doing 365,000 for three years is not needed. That's definitely been made clear by a few different, you know, we had the engineer that went in there, we had a contractor go in there. I mean, he did it to the nuts and the bolts and the light fixtures. I mean, he detailed it to the point, you know, that, that's exactly, you know, he said that we haven't had hard numbers come in, but yet we have. We, we as a council had the opportunity to hire an engineer, and again, it was like 35, 40...
It was an architect.
An architect, excuse me. And they were up to 35, I think we got them to 35, 45,000. We budgeted 55. We didn't go with them. You know, I had a architect that came to me, said, hey, Val, I'd love to look at it. They came in, they said they would charge us $10,000 to draw this up. And when they were at the building, he came up with the number between 350, 450,000 to retrofit. Then we had the contractor come in, again, went through the church, nuts and bolts. Now, he did it at a higher cost, and he did the engineering or the architect at like 65,000. Well, again, we already knew we could get that for $10,000. So, I mean, there was a lot of big numbers in his estimates that we chipped away at. And even after you chipped away at those numbers, you got back down to that 550,000, 600 on a bad day. So with your math, Mr. Mayor, and I would have had Jan look at my math as well, I just want you to know, I don't have enough, sorry, toes and fingers to do the math. If we have the 365,000 right now, next year, and we could split this up in two years, but we just got it over and done with with one more year, probably around 185,000, that would give us a total retrofit of 550,000, which, after the retrofit and the purchase of the building at 335,000, we would spend 885,000. That is still less than the, you know, the gruffs, that would have been less than the, it's right there at the module, we already own it, we can get them in. You know, so we're already right there at that number. I understand where, you know, we think that if we build a new building, we won't have to go in and manage it or supervise it. However, yes, you do. I don't know, I'm sure anybody who has built a home lately knows that you still have to go in and manage that site almost every day. I mean, I've known people that, you know, the doors didn't come in right, they had to get them reordered. So I really think, you know, I'm going with logic, I'm not going with what personality is. I think the mayor has made very good points about if we can get this building done for that 365, and I'd love to tell you, yes, sir, we'll get it done. But I really think if we added another 185,000 onto that price point, we're going to get our retrofits taken care of. And if there's something that we need in the future, that every building, by the way, will need, no matter if we build new or retrofit anything, that's something that we put in a five-year plan to budget. And again, just because we have a number in our budget for five years from now does not mean that that's going to happen. It's a Christmas wish list, and every department head knows you wish, and then you get your reality when you open your budget up at the end of the year. So, you know, logically, I'm going to have to agree with the mayor, if we can get this done for the 365, I think the Soul's Harbor is, you know, like the mayor said, would be a slam dunk for us. And I just can't imagine us continuing to entertain this subject much more before we all start seeing Ms. Williams start dancing on the table.
Thank you. Okay, there's less than 30 minutes left. Just so you know, this is a workshop. Workshops mean discussion only. There's no votes taken, this is just participation. So nothing is decided tonight, it's just part of the process. So we have less than 30 minutes left before we start our next workshop. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make, make comment? Yes, Ms. DiArvo?
Thank you, Brenda DiArvo, 11661 Camp Drive. Thank you so much for all of your dedication, the time and effort you've put in. I think we've got a lot of great ideas out there. I think what we've heard from Mr. Mentaka, I think he had some very, very valid points. And I think they represent our citizens very well with making those points. Regarding the current building, I think we already had a contractor come before council and said that it really was not worth trying to retrofit that. So he seemed to have the credentials, and from speaking with former police officers who worked in that building and had a lot of construction knowledge, tended to concur with that. Regarding Ms. Kenny's comments, and I think in real estate and what we're looking to do, the mantra, location, location, location. The decision you're about to make is going to choose a location for our police department maybe the next 25 to 50 years. Do we really want to put a police department in a residential neighborhood because we're really focusing on the dollars and cents? So if we have 365,000 budgeted for this year, if we can sell the Soul's Harbor Church and net out the 335 that was spent, you have $700,000 to move our police department to a very safe environment. $700,000 could give you several options with the property we already own. As just was pointed out, the community development, if they have offices at Public Works, I'm not sure of that. That definitely is very doable. And as, since we do not have the space requirements that we did a few years ago, that $700,000 could do a lot to use this property right here where we're sitting to combine that to a municipal complex, whether you go second story or whether you put additions. $700,000 could get us exactly what we want and we don't have to go in debt and, and we have the money and already own that property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, even if you have spoken previously? Yes?
Did I give my address again?
Go ahead.
Is it necessary to give the address again?
What's? Yes, yes.
Okay, 11894 East Blue Cove Drive, Julie and Mendonza. So a great discussion. I really, you know, appreciate us trying to dig down to the numbers and the work done by the mayor. Just a couple scattered, not very organized thoughts. If the budget is indeed a Christmas list and one department requests a million dollars, I hope that a different department, Public Works, also requests a million dollars so that when the gifts are opened on Christmas Day, it can be just an equal consideration of all departments. Because if one department always requests a third of the budget and another department is punching the numbers to try to see what can I responsibly do in a city, in a small city that's in debt, it just, we can't say the person who asks for the most is the best advocate and the person who is fiscal responsible just is never gonna, is never gonna be able to match that or is never even gonna be able to contest with that. So that, the Christmas wish list didn't make sense to me. I think, I really wanna encourage the council not to overlook the absolute expertise and years and years of knowledge that Louise Kenny has when it comes to the zoning and the areas. I think that the points that you make, Louise, are, I can't talk too directly. The points that Louise makes are excellent when it comes to the placement of things, the future of our city. And so I just always hope that, that we listen to her last word when it comes to zoning. Thanks, Jan, for acknowledging our idea. Kathy and I did spend a lot of time thinking about different ways to utilize things that we already have. You know, second story wasn't on our mind. We really felt like there were, it's a good idea, but I just wanted to throw out there that we also talked about other ideas that were even simpler and perhaps more cost effective. I understood what Valerie said about the elevator. You know, I think she had some really good points, too. We'd be glad to talk anymore about the ideas. We've also been taking tours, asking questions, doing public record requests so that we can present ideas to the council that are well thought out and in the interest of the people of Danell. Thank you.
Ms. Dunn?
Kathy Dunn, 11386 Hendricks Drive. There's a huge amount of space here that is not utilized. There's a big office in the back that is designated for the city council to use that they're not using, and also filing that we could consolidate. This whole center of the building is not being used. The conference room is rarely used. You could put a very small addition on the back for an evidence room and a gun room, and we could be done. We have a lot of space at Public Works and we could freshen that up, which needs to be done yesterday. And I'm very puzzled. I thought that the city council was supposed to be responsive to the, the requests of the citizens. The citizens make their needs known. You vote, you voted to sell the Soul's Harbor Church, yet we voted on it twice. I don't understand. Why do we keep going backwards? And we have a, a department head that runs around town politicking to get, to go backwards. How can we ever make any progress this way? The other thing is, I fail to see why a town of 2,000 people needs a 6,000 square foot police station. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, Scott? It's already been decided, name and address.
My name's Scott Kiefer. I still live at 90075, East Blue Cove Road. I just wanna address a couple of things that were brought up. The first thing is, whatever we decide, I believe it's in the council's best interest to hang on to Soul Harbor's church building and not sell it. I think it's been brought up by multiple people. It makes a good town hall place, it's a good parking place. For meetings, anything can be done there. So either way, I think the, the issue of selling the property needs to be taken off of the market. Even if it's leased, leased out for, you know, maybe the chamber can handle leasing it out for different events here in town. I, I don't know, but I don't think it's a good idea to sell that building either way. It still helps with the problems we have with parking, not having places to meet. So whether it chooses a police station or not, I, I think we still need to retain that property. As far as building a two-story structure, I can tell you, I had a house out on the river, flat roof, just like this is, and that was $100,000, not including engineers and the actual stuff. It was just, like, the price was ridiculous. My original house was 150,000. They wanted like 300 to put a second story on a 1,400 square foot house. We're triple that here. As far as new builders go, having new construction done, I can tell you, there is no guarantee on price. These people see people screaming all the time. They have an escalation clause in their contract. If materials go up, they can raise the price on building. As far as that being a residential area, I completely disagree. I don't believe that it's residential. You've got a church there, you've got two or three rather large businesses right in that area. There are a few houses, and even those I would consider businesses because I believe about 60% of them are rental properties. And they're small businesses, but they're businesses nonetheless. And again, before you guys, and I, I don't believe you're doing any voting today, even with Van Aken coming in from Foxfire Realty, I would like to further discuss with you the options of doing the limited service listing agreement and companies that can do that for you. I think it'll save the city a lot of money and puts you back in control of it. So that's all I have to say. Oh, one, I'm sorry, one more thing. The list that I gave you of the properties, there is another one available up there, and it's the Dry Cleaners Plaza. And there's also the lot right next door to that is also for sale. So that will put you right up against the old Masonic Building and then the art gallery that's doing the, the building that was orange, the karate dojo. So again, you're right in that commercial area, but you know, your purchase price at 325 and 50 puts it at 375 for that. But I don't know if that building could be retrofitted or have to be torn down. But that's why I gave you the list of properties to kind of give you an idea of, you know, what sold was listed and what else is available out there.
Scott, thank you. Just one comment. You're, you're correct on the construction costs. That if we went modular, we were given a guarantee for 30 to, 60 to 90 days.
Okay. I wasn't in for that meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Mayor?
Okay. Yes? On Zoom? Art, you'll be next. Let's do Zoom.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Oh, Art, okay. Come on, Art.
Sorry.
Yeah, great ideas all around.
Name and address.
Art Jones, 12163 Ponder Highway. And great ideas all around. But one of the things that, that I see you're kind of missing in your discussion is you're saying, okay, it's gonna cost this much to build this building, this brand new building for this many square feet. Well, the Soul's Harbor Church is 6,000 square feet. See how much it would cost to build that? And it's solid. It's a solid building. So now, as the city of Danell and grows, it's not gonna outgrow that, that space so fast. That's a lot of room. The police department needs a little bit, bit of elbow room. And it's probably gonna have to grow in the future. So I think that that Soul's Harbor place is still a good bang for the buck. I think it's, it makes a lot of sense. Unless you come up with something better, I think, keep it in the running. You're getting 6,000 square feet. It's already masonry. It's got outside, it's masonry walls, inside is masonry. You know, you, you, it's got room. It's got room, it's got parking, it's in a great location. You know, this is a small town. It takes two seconds to get to the main highway. Boom, you're there. So it's in a great location and it's, it's a place where it would be nice to build up Danell and in that area a little bit. So I think you're getting a lot more with the Soul's Harbor Church. I don't think retrofitting the original police station will work. It's already jammed in there and, and I've looked at it, it's got some problems. So this one, we know this is a good, solid building. You know, it's just something that, that the police department wanted, you know. So give them what they want. Support the police station. Give them what they want. Let's, let's treat them like gold. They're, they're, like Anita said, you know, they, they put their lives on our, on the line for us. So I don't know if it's proper for the police to come up and talk or not, but I'd like to hear from them. What do they want? What do they need?
All right, we'll have one, maybe two, and then council needs a little break before we get into our, we're gonna be, okay, Esther?
I'm watching P O Box 143, Danell, Florida. I just wanna make a couple, couple quick comments. When we say we have 365 in the budget for remod, don't forget what we're gonna get off of the old building. As one council member said, she gave a number 250. So that would give us actually 615 to remod Soul's Harbor. If the number of the other council member mentioned 500 to 600,000 is an accurate number, then there would be no money out of pocket, no extra money, no spreading it over three years. Secondly, if we do sell Soul's Harbor and we do sell the police station, 350 for Souls, 250 for the OPD, 600,000, 6% commission, don't forget there's a 36,000 commission the city's gonna be paying to sell those two buildings. So we have to take that out of our, our budget to whatever we look, whatever we're looking at in the future. I just wanted to bring that up so we don't have to look for some others. Thank you.
All right, we'll, we'll let one more speak. We still have the Zoom? Okay. Is everybody satisfied in the room? Very good. All right. Andy, Zoom?
Can you hear me?
Gotcha.
Dominic Batista, 19860 Southwest 90th Lane, Danell Rainbow Springs Community. I've listened to this and what I basically heard was basically a recap, replay of really what's been discussed for the last 18 some odd months. And I really didn't hear any kind of strategies, any kind of groundwork plans, just a lot of numbers, a lot of locations. There are so many numbers flying around. I mean, I even get confused. I can't even keep them straight. I had, a long time ago, I, I suggested to put the police department in the current City Hall building. I thought it was a good place and I still think it's a good idea. I don't know about the second floor thing or whatever, but, I mean, as it stands, I think there's plenty of room. But everybody just kinda looked at me funny when I brought that up. But what has happened here, and I keep saying this, is if I put my history hat on, the police department was at Illinois and McKinney for a very long time before it moved. So everybody's talking about residential and commercial. If you wanna expand the historic district, those historic shops, ultimately, that's gonna be commercial. It's not gonna be residential. It might have some sprinklings still. But what do you want the historic district to be? Is it gonna be commercial or is it gonna be residential? I mean, so there's a lot of things going on that I don't really, I, I think those need to be addressed as well. What has happened, though, and I keep saying this, is with all the discussion and all the research and all the analysis and everything else, you've circled back to Ohio Street to the Soul's Harbor Church. And that sounds like a slam dunk as it stands. And I think you can control it. I think you can control it better than any other project. And I don't think you have to spend all the kinds of money that they're talking about. There's too many big numbers being thrown out there. And all I can say is, I hope you guys come up with a decision real soon because this is an election year and there's three seats that are gonna be contested. So let's get it together and let's move forward, guys. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second? Okay. Everybody, we're taking about a 10-minute break and we'll be back for the regular workshop.